I'll call, are you ready? Call the meeting to order. This is the October 20th meeting of Yellow Springs Village Council. We're starting at six o'clock for our budget hearing on enterprise and special revenue funds. Judy, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Wintrae.
Yes.
Asklin.
Sims.
Here.
Ouch.
Here.
Ween.
Here.
Also President's Finance Director Melissa Van Zant. Supervisor of Streets, Parks, and many other things, Jason Hamby. And Electrical Supervisor Johnny Burns. And Village Manager Patty Bates.
Thank you. So, since our budget expert, Melissa Van Zant, our Finance Director, is here, or do you want to start, Patty? Or just turn it over to Melissa?
Yeah.
And I want to point out, in the packet, Melissa provided a little tool for us, Fund Accounting Basics, where she went through and described what the funds are about and how money can be transferred. And that really helps. I mean, it is very confusing to look at all of these funds and understand what it's all about. So, I appreciate that. And I think also having the statement of cash position and showing that running list of all of those funds is helpful also. So, now it's your turn.
Okay. I think that I'm going to start with just answering the few questions that were a result of the last meeting on the General Fund. We had an increase in income tax of approximately $200,000 over what was anticipated. And I was able to pinpoint that to YSI Inc.'s net profits. We didn't receive anything in 2013 because they had filed an extension. And so, we received their 2013 in '14 and a portion of '14 this year as well, in anticipation of the additional funds that we would receive for them. So, that tied right back to them. It was $212,919 that we received from Rita for YSI Inc.'s net profits. However, they had requested the extension, as I said, and they had given us, out of that $212,117,000. And their extension was through the end of this month, so that could still be adjusted, as well as what we received in advance for 2014, which was like $89,000-ish that they had given me the figures for. So, that could be adjusted as well. So, that's where the increase came. And Rita did caution that we should never kind of bank on that happening, because they had given me figures back to 2010 of what we've received from YSI. And in 2010, we got $74,000. In '11, they got a refund. In '12, we got $122,000. Last year, we got nothing, because it came this year. So, it's fluctuated kind of wildly. So, it's not really something that they told us that we should bank on.
And just to be clear, this is on their corporate profits. This is not their employee income tax.
No, this is totally separate.
And so, as you looked back and worked with Rita on employee income tax, did you see any much change, you know, with our largest employers of increases, decreases from our employers?
I didn't look at the withholding side of it. I was only looking at the net profit side. But I get a list every month of the top 25 contributors, so I can definitely take a look at that and see if there were any other trends.
I did kind of glance at that when we were talking about that, and I did not see a huge amount of change in any of the larger employers. They seem to be pretty steady. I mean, they fluctuated a little bit, but not enough to say they're putting on or laying off employees of any kind.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, so that was the first question. The second one was about the per watt hour tax and whether or not it was mandatory, and it was, and there was legislation. There was a bill that was enacted that required that. And I didn't cite the bill, but just whether or not it was mandatory. Yes, it is mandatory. Local government fund revenue. There is a handout that Judy has. I did get an answer to that as to why the distribution is uneven. And it's based upon a formula dating back to 1983 that is still used to this day. And basically, what it comes down to is it's computed on a four-factor formula, which is on the back page, federal census, tax effort, square miles, and per capita income. So, it's still based upon those four factors as to what we receive. So, that would be the discrepancy why the larger cities were getting more, because square miles is part of it, so.
What does tax effort mean? Does that mean what we contribute?
Well, it's looking at what we're receiving from the auditor already, our portion of the various taxes that we receive from the auditor. So, it's a number of different things that we get from them.
So, it doesn't have to do with the fact that we produce a large portion of sales tax? The fact that we're actually putting a lot of money into the state coffers in terms of sales tax, that doesn't mean, so...
No, this formula rewards sprawl by rewarding square miles.
Right.
It absolutely does.
Yeah, this is not good for us.
No.
I do not like that formula.
And so, I guess a higher per capita income would mean less as well?
I don't know exactly how they work that, but I can try to dig into it a little bit deeper if you guys want me to.
I would read it just the opposite, more per capita income potentially, the more they get.
Well, it would be good to know.
Yeah, I mean, I would...
How the per capita income affects...
Well, just generally, you know, just maybe census and square miles is pretty self-explanatory.
The other two?
But maybe a little bit fleshing out the other two.
Okay.
Maybe just...
Well, maybe it isn't self-explanatory. I mean, you know, maybe...
So, this comes through the county? This was what the county decided?
No, the money comes from the state level, but it's given to the counties to distribute. And this is how they do it.
Right. But this formula was determined by the county.
I believe so.
County commissioners.
Well, and generally, you can have some input, and there is a little bit of play in Claremont County. Anyone that receives it can have input into it. But essentially, yes, the Claremont, the county commissioners are the ones who make the decision on what percentage is.
Oh, that's actually really good. I figured it was at the state level. I mean, it's going to be much easier for us to lobby the Green County Commissioners than it is. I've already started that, so that's good.
You can generally lobby them to have some percentage of changes. Not usually very successful, but you can lobby them. Go Yellow Springs! If you ever wanted to lobby, now's the time.
It wouldn't hurt to be a bit of a squeaky wheel.
Yeah.
That, I would support us writing them a letter, making a case.
Well, I was actually trying to make the case more specifically by, and I asked how much money we generate, how much sales tax revenue we generate. Nobody will tell me. That's like a secret number.
That, we should be able to get that through a freedom of information request if they won't tell you.
We'll get that.
That's state information.
I think I asked, I either asked, I think I asked David Graham. I think I asked the county auditor.
Okay.
And he wasn't able to tell me.
But that's freedom of information. There's no way they can keep that a secret.
We'll get that information.
See if we can find that out. Thank you.
So, just recapping, it sounds like we know there are these four criteria, but how they're used, I'd like to understand more specifically how they're used and then clarify...
How they're weighted, yeah.
Yeah. Who we, if indeed we lobby the county to...
The auditor.
County auditor.
Well, it's a policy decision how they calculate this and how they decide to distribute. So, the people we would have to lobby would be commissioners, right?
They'll be the ones to change it, but generally, the commissioners will go with what the auditor suggests. But it wouldn't hurt to lobby them all.
Well, but they make the policy that the auditor has to follow.
Right.
And so, if we say the policy is unfair, the person, it doesn't do any good to complain about policy issues to an auditor. We have to complain about the policy issues to the commission.
Okay.
Great. But also, who determines how much money goes to each county? I mean, does the county have any role in that, or is that at the state level?
I would think that would be at the state level.
And I think it may be simply sales tax revenue. I don't know. Local government fund may come, could you find that out? What does local government fund come from? Is it strictly sales tax revenue?
Good question.
While we're on the topic of tax, commercial activity tax, have we ever received it? No, and it's only received at the state level. That was what I was told by the state, that if they keep that, we don't get any of it. So, that's that. Trash, tonnage in landfill versus recycling, and I think you all got that information. And then, what's the...
Do you want to, do you have it written down?
I do not have it written down. I had sent a report via email to Judy that was distributed, and I didn't bring it with me, unfortunately.
I didn't remember getting it.
I had to.
I thought I remembered getting it, but I don't remember.
But there is a monthly report that's sent that actually has our, what we send to a landfill and recycling tonnage numbers included in it. Denise Swinger gets it every month, so that is something that we receive on a regular basis.
Cool.
And then, there was a question about a percent increase in the levy that's needed, and I still need to look into that. And then, there was a question about contractual services breakdown, which I have all of that. So, I didn't print out a separate copy of it, but I do have that. I've been, I've had my hands full trying to get ready for this next, so that's an easy thing, and I can give a chart of accounts, and that would clear that up really quick. So, so those were the questions from last time. Most of them I got to, some of them are still on the table. Okay, so, did anybody have any questions about the fund accounting basics that I had passed out? I just want to make sure that I take a moment to address any questions that anybody had with that. And it goes hand in hand with that statement of cash position, so you can directly see what I'm referring to. Each of the different funds have a different label, a numerical label, depending on what type of fund they are. So, I felt like that was helpful. And it also sees where we started the year bottom line and where we are right now, as of the, I think, end of September was that one, or it might have been October. I can't remember which one.
September, September 30.
It was the end of September. But that doesn't take into consideration any future expenses that haven't been encumbered or revenues that we haven't received yet either. So, that's one of the reasons why the solid waste fund looks so funny, because all of the expenditures have already been accounted for, but not the revenues, because we haven't received them yet. So, it looks like it's negative, but it won't be. Okay, so I guess we will get into the special revenue funds. And there was, on page two in the parks, there was a line that was not included in the total, so the total was off. And I fixed that, and Judy has that second page. Unfortunately, it's black and white. My printer is messed up. So, if you would replace page two with this one, it shows the correct total for the parks. And then, also Judy has in her possession to be distributed, something that we're going to refer to quite a bit, which is the 2015 Budget Savings Worksheet. And I do have extras of those if anybody in the audience would like one. And also, Fund Balance Projections, it's going to include everything that we are going to discuss tonight, along with the General Fund, which is just repeated, it's the same information that there was at the last meeting. It's just I built upon that same worksheet.
I don't see any differences. In a quick perusal of this, these two documents, I don't see any changes.
The parks, it's the parks line for the expenditures.
Is it just page two?
Yes, it's just page two.
Oh, okay. It's the same.
Page two.
It's like $20,000.
Oh, I see, yeah, I see.
Because there was a capital purchase in there that wasn't included in that totaling.
Okay. The 2015 budget is okay? That's, I was just looking at that.
Yes, the 2015 budget is fine, but the total's in '14. I didn't want you guys to be mistaken. So, I noticed that late today, so.
Melissa, you can run us this one.
Yeah.
I got her.
Was there an extra Fund Balance Projection?
Yeah, I got that one to her, but I didn't get that one.
This one?
You got it right.
Okay. For who?
So, parks total, that one?
And I'm sure there's something up here that I'm not seeing too.
Oh, parks total. Okay, I was looking at the fund.
Yeah, the parks and the expenditures was where there was the error in 2014 that I caught when I was going through it again today.
And what is that changing?
The numbers before that are fine, too.
It was just, if you look at the, each individual line, the total in the very bottom didn't, in the formula, it didn't capture one of those lines, so I had to go back and I had to redo it. So, it's actually, the old one said it was like $50,000 worth of expenditures, and it was like 70, because it didn't include one line, which was a capital purchase.
And it's just those total lines that are different? All of the numbers leading up to it are all exactly the same?
Are all correct.
Exactly the same. And the 2015 budget didn't impact the 2015 budget either?
No, it was just that total didn't include one of those lines, and I wanted to make sure that you guys had the most accurate information.
So, that sheet didn't come around, so I guess this is the 49, 541?
Did you get, did you pass the sheets?
Yeah.
No, the next line, Brian, the 56, 648. Should be 77, 394.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was...
Seven.
I didn't understand what I was being handed. Yeah, it was just, it was just the figures in 2014, just in parks expenditures, which were updated.
Oh, all the way across, it was?
Yep.
Yeah, there was three of them. There's three lines included in all of the budgets for 2014. It's kind of where we started at, where we were as of the end of September, and then what we're, where we're projected to be. So, there's three different figures for the year 2014 in there.
Essentially, it's $21,000 difference.
Yes, and it wasn't due to a capital purchase.
Okay.
Okay, so the special revenue funds, let's see. Almost all of them are going to be ending the year with positive amounts. If you take a look at the Fund Balance Projection Sheet, it's got all of the special revenue funds in there, which are most of the first page and two on the second page.
Is that this?
Mm-hmm, yep. I think everybody already got that one, didn't they? I thought it went way back around.
Lots of handouts to that.
The only funds that are going to be ending up with negative impacts to the beginning balance were the Street Maintenance and Repair Fund, but there were a number of capital purchases out of that one. And the Green Space Fund, which we put in $25,000, and we're supposed to spend 100 out of it, which hasn't occurred yet. So, it would be ending a little bit less than what we started. But other than that, the rest of them are gonna, they're going to be in favorable positions. The Coats and Supplies Fund was minimal, minimal impact, but, so we're going to be ending the year positively in all of the special revenue funds. A lot of them have been spending less than what they were allocated, or at least on track to. So, that's a good thing in terms of the special revenue funds. In 2015, what we'll see in the budgets, I'm just kind of...
I want to stop you for a minute.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm going.
I know, it's a lot of information.
Would you just itemize the special revenue, just list, just say what they are?
Yep.
I don't need the topics. I just want to make sure I'm...
Yep, the special revenue funds include the street, the Street Maintenance and Repair Fund. It includes the, let's see, State Highway Maintenance Fund.
And what is the distinction there?
It's just basically, we receive money that comes in for our gasoline taxes that were received, as well as our motor vehicle registrations. And a portion, 92.5% of them have to go to the Normal Streets Fund, and 7.5% of those revenues that we receive have to be earmarked for State Highway Fund. So, that would go to support any kind of maintenance that was done on 68.
68.
That the state actually would tell us when we need to do. Is that correct, Jason? And they don't have anything scheduled in '15, so we just keep continuing to build to that until they have a project in which they want us to use that money for.
So, most of that money can go to our internal streets?
Yeah.
No. Well, not the state.
Not the state fund?
Oh, okay. I thought that's what you were saying.
No, our, our Street Maintenance and Repair Fund is our budget.
Yeah, yeah, I got that.
And 92.5% of the state money received goes...
Goes to 68.
No, goes, no, does go to us, and 7.5% of it goes to the State Highway Fund.
We have two funds, okay? We have two funds for streets. One of them is strictly State Highway, which for us is 68, or Xenia. And the 7.5% of what we get from the state must be spent on Xenia.
Right.
Period. The other 92.5% can be spent on any street in the village.
Yeah, okay, that's what I think I meant to say.
Yep, so that's where the revenue is, that's why we have that distinction, is just because it's mandated by the state that way. We do have, within that Street Maintenance Repair Fund, we do have the ODOT State Routs to School. We should be getting about $90,000 in 2015 to be turned around and spent right away for the consultation fees and the right-of-way work that's going to occur with that project. So, we're gonna, we're gonna see $90,000 in revenue and $90,000 in expenditures. It's just going to be a pass-through.
What's the note about CDBG funds will not pass through us?
Yes, I was unaware of that. The $22,000 for...
Oh, okay.
The curbs.
The curbs, okay.
Yes, we don't actually get that, and I was mistaken. I thought that we actually got that, and it got filtered through us. But Patty said that we don't actually see that money ourselves, even though the project is still happening.
Right, the county administers the project.
Okay.
Because it's federal money under HUD, so they have to...
So, then, in the Parks and Recreation Fund, there's a number of departments that come out of that. We've got parks, we've got pool, we've got Bryant Center, and we've got Bryant Youth Center.
Are we done talking about streets totally, or...
Well, she wanted me to kind of go through, if you guys want to...
I just wanted to, so in my head, I was understanding.
Well, I mean, this is, this would be a good, a good time to talk about the streets in general, if we want to go ahead and do that.
Well, do you still want your just list of what the...
Yeah, I just wanted to, in my head, so when I, so when we talk about special revenue funds, I just want, so it's streets.
Parks.
Parks.
There's an Economic Development Fund.
Including the Bryant's, the Bryant Center.
Yeah, those are all, everything in purple are the departments that are underneath of those funds.
Administ, what's EDC?
Isn't this just basically a list of the funds?
Yeah, that's a list of all the...
But that's not just special revenue, all of them?
Yeah, that includes all of them, so...
I mean, this, this list that you have, this special revenue fund budget lists all the special revenue funds?
Yes.
I know.
Okay.
And I just wanted to go over it. I just need to slow down enough so I feel like I'm really understanding it.
But can we go through the budget? I mean, why not go through the budget instead of just going through and listing? We have 20 more minutes.
I just, I just want to know, what is EDCS?
Economic Development.
Oh, okay.
Sustainability Fund, or something like that.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, so, the special revenue funds, there's, there's nothing really worth kind of combing over with a fine-tooth comb, because all of the departments, if you refer to the 2015 Budget Savings Worksheet, were able to make significant cuts. If you refer to that middle box on the sheet, those are all the special revenue funds, and actually, right there, Mary Ann, they're actually listed out fairly clearly. I've just got a million pieces of paper in my hand, or I would have pointed that out sooner. So, if we take a look, as we kind of went over with the General, the General Fund, Patty had requested all the department heads to try to cut 3%. And if you look at that column, let's see, it's the one, two, three, the fourth, the fourth one over, I don't know what color it is, because mine's not color. That's, that's what was requested be cut, and then it's got, it lists the 2015 operating budget right next to that. Ooh, stink bug. And then...
[laughing]
And then, it's got the total savings off to the right. So, if you take a, if you take a look, Street Maintenance and Repair was able to shave off $89,000. Parks is going to spend slightly more, but their, their operating budget is already only at $38,000 anyways. The pool is a fixed thing. There's a 1% increase that's, that's included every year for Dayton Pool Management. So, that's obviously going to be higher, and there aren't really any cuts that we can make there if we continue to keep that contract. The Bryant Center was actually able to make $20,000 worth of cuts, and they only needed to make $2,500, which was pretty significant. Bryant Youth, they were able to cut slightly, actually more than the 3% as well. The Green Belt, we haven't discussed any type of allocation or expenditure for next year, so right now, it looks as if there won't be any expenditure, so it kind of skews the savings, because we were going to spend $100,000 this year, and we aren't really set to spend anything next year that I'm aware of. Mayor's Court Computer, I did cut that down a little bit to kind of be more in line with their actual costs that occur, which is just their computer software. Coats and Supplies Fund, I had that we were going to spend probably about $3,000, which is kind of more in line, but that can fluctuate, because that, that fund actually has a little bit of money in it. And then, the Further Ends of Justice Fund, I've got that we're going to spend basically about the same amount, because that, that fund's doing fairly well, and we keep receiving quite a bit to contribute to that. So, overall, in general, when it comes to revenues, I don't see anything that's very alarming in terms of the revenues. What we've received in the state, or the, the streets for the gasoline and the motor vehicle registrations has went down a little bit, but I don't think it's anything that's too significant at this point. And with the expenditures, I mean, everybody was able to cut quite a bit off of their budgets.
What's the $90,000 that was cut in streets?
That's, yeah, I'd like to better understand.
It was, it was off of the paving, because the paving costs came in quite a bit lower than what was budgeted this year, and Jason was comfortable with what was done this year and keeping that number moving forward into next year.
Okay.
So, we had $277,000 for this year, and it dropped down to $200,000 for next year.
Okay, thank you.
What are we, I, I would like to know what we're planning to pave and how you should...
That's the sheet.
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't see that sitting. There's a lot of paper that's on our table.
What that sheet has on it is what we spent in 2014, and then, those are the remaining streets that we have to pave that are in dire need of repaving.
The ones in blue?
The one in blue, yeah. Yeah, that's 2015.
Color combination.
Color to read against, so...
2015 and afterwards, that's what that is.
And beyond.
And beyond.
Beyond, like how much ton would you say?
Well, we can, typically, if we keep this amount there, we can get it done, that remaining blue section in two years.
The, the blue section is not necessarily what we're going to do in 2015?
The blue section are, is a list of streets that need redone.
That are remaining, yeah.
Yes, but we're gonna, I'm gonna sit down with Patty and see if there is any infrastructure that needs to be fixed first, that we need to go through. But these are the streets remaining that need to be done. Just FYI, 95% of our streets have been repaved, and that is, that is a great thing, and I would like to keep that going, because now we have something that is there. It's a base to start on, instead of just aggregate, cover it all with different stuff, so...
And you also have...
There's a list of all of the streets.
Yeah, Jason's also...
This is great. Thank you.
On a list.
Yep.
That's great.
While we're on streets, I'm going to do just a very brief diversion. As a cyclist, I notice potholes, and like on East Davis, for example, and so, is there a time when those get fixed, or should people, when they notice a pothole that's sort of dangerous, just call the village, or...
Typically, that's what they do, is they just call in and say, hey, we noticed a pothole. But through our routines throughout the day, we'll, we'll go out and look at them. And if, if enough needs done, because we have to have enough to where we have to order a ton and a half of asphalt. They won't take anything less than a ton and a half, so we have to put those on the back burner until we get a ton and a half, and then we can fix them. But typically, they just, they just call in unless.
Yeah, and they can put what's called cold patch in it in the wintertime if it's really bad, but it doesn't generally stay. I mean, it comes right back out, so it's kind of a waste of money, see? You hate to do that if you don't have to, so.
I mean, Railroad Street, you've talked about possibly kind of redoing, rerouting even, so I'm wondering whether.
I mean, that's one that seems like it could maybe just be filled for the time being because, but it is really bad.
I know it's really bad.
It gets a lot of traffic.
The only reason that that was thrown in is because our ownership of one oh-two Dayton Street, the parking lot, and what's going in and out there as far as safety reasons.
Right.
Yeah, that can, that can be filled. Like, we've typically been doing is cold patch and, and aggregate.
What I'm thinking is that, given our, our economic realities, we may need to just be on a slower schedule than we've been. And in this, these last few may have to drag out a little longer than we would like. So rather than thinking two years, thinking three years and making it a third. Because I, I'm just, I think that maybe end up being more fiscally possible.
And, and that's certainly, certainly possible, but what I would like to do is, since we have cut it already, is keep it at the two-hundred, and we may not spend that. And, or, it may go up like Salt did this year, and we end up spending all of that to do less, and do a third, but.
That's actually the hardest part of planning asphalt, is you never know.
Because it's a petroleum, right?
You never know what we could do.
I do like the color combination. A little tough to read.
So I guess we. Thanks for the report.
Yeah, it was great.
Really helpful to have it written out. And if I could get this electronically, that would be. I'd like to have it all in one, just get it to Judy, and she'll, she'll get it distributed to us. That's helpful for me, because I can't keep track of paper.
So I guess in terms of special revenue funds, overall expenditures have been cut quite a bit for twenty fifteen, um, with nothing too, you know, alarming in terms of revenues because most of the special revenues are supported, um, by transfers to the general fund, which, if you look at the revenue, there's a transfer line in like the streets and the parks. Police Pension Fund is another one, where transfers from the general fund will go in to offset the costs. So basically, I have it just zeroing out at this point and not really building anything because it's coming from the general fund, unless, you know, there's a different approach that you all would like to take and try to build those funds up to kind of minimize the transfers later. But I think that in terms of what we're looking at now with the general fund, the smaller the transfer that we can make, probably the better.
I was actually wondering, you know, when I look at some of these larger balances, wondering if we should be transferring as much, because we can always transfer it into the special revenue fund, but it's, we can't transfer it out, right? So I would absolutely agree with that. Where did the, what, what's the twenty-one thousand dollar cut from Bryan Center?
I'm gonna try to flip to the detail real quick. Jason, did you remember?
Uh, Maintenance of Equipment was, um, a good one, um, because we rolled basically, um, everything to Maintenance of Facility.
That's right.
That titles everything, right?
Okay, that's.
Yeah, that's where, that's where most of it was.
Okay.
We had, we had a maintenance line in each one of the funds, and they're all Jason's to, to deal with. So what he and Melissa did was make one Maintenance of Facilities Fund for overall as opposed to, this line goes here, this line goes here. They are all in one now for the, for all the facilities that he can work out of.
Okay.
So that twenty-one thousand, is it, is it not real savings? I guess I'm.
It's, it's, it is real savings, but it's Jason's feeling he can get more bang for, from his, for his buck doing it out of one because he can buy more bulk type of things, right, Jason? Is that essentially?
Yep.
Great, thanks.
And the fifty-seven thousand from planning, savings from planning, how is that?
Um, that was up in the, um, general fund, and that was because the contract with Green County is going to be eliminated.
We talked about that, right?
Yeah, the special revenue are just the ones that are in the middle.
Yeah.
Everything that was at the top, we, we went through during the last meeting, yep.
Sorry about that.
No, no problem. So the, the special revenue funds, I mean, they kind of are what they are. They're supported by the general fund for the most part, and a lot of them are gonna, most of them are gonna end up with positive balances or adding to their fund balances at the end of the year with the exception of just those two. It was, uh, Streets and one other one. Let's see, Streets and Greenspace, but I mean, those aren't really.
And Furtherance of Justice is really, that's revenue that's coming in that we, we never add from the gen- general fund to Furtherance of Justice, do we?
No, no, we don't, we don't supply any of that. That's usually coming from like the state or the county level.
From drug, drug forfeitures.
Exactly, mhm. Yeah, so that's not anything that we, we support at all. Um, all the other ones, though, we do. Well, Coats and Supplies are all donations from the community.
Yeah.
And Mayor's Computer Fund, that comes from, a portion of what they bring in has to go to the Computer Fund, and then the rest of it goes to the general fund, so it's, it's, um, supported by what's coming in from external people that are paying for Mayor's and such, mhm. Yep.
Okay.
So that's kind of the, that's the special revenue funds. I thought we'd start with the easy one, because the, the enterprise funds are gonna get a little bit more complicated.
I would like to say on the enterprise funds, as we're getting started on them, one thing that Melissa and I talked about is that none of the enterprise funds have capital expenditure lines in them. And their lines are there in the budget, they just never have anything into, in them. And the way that capital projects are supposed to be, um, handled in an enterprise fund is that money comes from the operating into the capital line for that fund, and then the capital projects come out of the capital line for that fund as opposed to coming from the general fund.
Right.
So what I've asked Melissa to do is reinstate those lines, so you will start seeing those, and she will periodically start making small transfers from the operating into the capital line to start amassing that money for those capital projects, because that's where that, those capital projects should be funded from. So when you see that start happening, be aware that that's why.
Good, okay.
Very good. I think it's gonna be a lot more helpful in figuring out exactly how much it is going to be earmarked for capital projects, but it hasn't been used in the past that I could find unless it was way back. Um, but if you look at your statement of cash position, I mean, those, those capital, um, those capital service funds are there, and some of them have a little bit of money in them. But there is one for each of the enterprise, well, actually, the enterprise funds don't have any, but there is, there is a, um, let's see, let me grab the thing real quick so I'm not speaking out of context here. Yeah, the, the capital, the capital improvement funds are any of the ones that are listed in the three hundreds. There's one for vehicles, there's one for cable, there's one for water, sewer, and electric, um, parks, facilities, and another capital, just general capital equipment fund, and then there are some grant funds that are in there too. So some of them do have money in them, um, others don't. Like, the facilities one, I think most of the money had been put into that from the general fund to kind of support the library. So that's, that's kind of where the money came from with that one.
And some of those funds, we actually added after the levy in two thousand and six because part of what was promised with that levy was specific money put in capital improvement funds. And so we put it there. What we decided after the last levy, when we, these funds were building up and building up, and the general fund was declining, that we weren't gonna do that any longer, that we would go back to the policy of just having that money in the general fund and transferring it in when we needed it.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I want everybody to kind of take a look at just the overview of the situation, which would be the, the fund balance projections. We're gonna take a look at those first. On the enterprise funds, we're on the second page. So we do have four enterprise funds, there are electric, water, sewer, and solid waste. And I've got the beginning balance, walking into fourteen, which corresponds with your statement of cash position. And then I've got where we are projecting our year-end, which ties to, um, the budget details that you guys have. And on the actual budget details, that very front page just gives the overview of the, the revenues and expenditures and the over, and I also have the projecting ending balance on that as well. So there's a number of different places to find the same information in terms of the impact on fund balances that you're gonna see, or projected to see at the end of fourteen on all of those funds. The electric fund is actually projected to finish out a little bit better than what we thought. We thought it was gonna go, um, into a deficit of about a million dollars based on what was allocated for operations coupled with capital. However, the projection is it's, it's gonna end in like a five-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit, which is a lot better. But one of the confusing things, if you take a look, uh, at the electric fund on that front page, where it's got the twenty-fourteen budget as of September thirtieth, and then what's projected, the expenditures as of the thirtieth are a little bit more than what are projected because after the thirtieth, I, um, had reduced, after talking to Johnny, the power cost PO for AMP because when we took a look at it, we had a lot more encumbered than what we needed to, so we did release some of that money. So it, it did, it did have a positive impact on the end-of-the-year result, so we did take a look at that. So it looks like as of nine-thirty, that's accurate, that's, that's where I, that's where we were, but I did in the last, uh, week, take a look at that, and Johnny and I decided to reduce that encumbrance, so we'll end out a little bit better. Revenues are down, though, about two-hundred thousand, and that was what happened last year as well, and it was a result of the top, uh, top twenty users. And this year, I still need to do a little bit of digging to, to put my finger on exactly where that was coming from. The electric revenues, though, if you take a look, I've got the kilowatt-hour usage over the last, I don't know, it's probably like ten years, and the, um, it's one of the commissions, I can't remember which one.
Energy Board.
Yeah, asks for it every year, so I've kept it updated. And I mean, the trend has been the last three or four years that people are using less kilowatt-hours, so. They're not huge jumps, but they are recurring, and then we've got more solar coming on, so.
It's what we want. I mean, that's, that's the irony of the situation. We want reduced energy usage, and we've talked about the fact that it's gonna impact our, our bottom line at some level, and.
So, I mean, can, can we tell whether the reduced, uh, electric usage is a result of energy efficiency or, or a result of, uh, decreased activity, you know?
I mean, it's hard for me to tell because, I, I mean, I do have it broken down into the classes that we have, the residential, the commercial, and the industrial, so it does go into that kind of detail. But as to why residential customers or any of the other classes may be using less, it's, I can't necessarily tell why they are, if it's a, a result of, you know, switching out all the light bulbs in their house or they're just turning things off and just generally using less. It's kind of hard for me to tell that.
In terms of businesses, I mean, if the business income is steady or going up, and their electric use is going down, then I think they could say it's not. I think you'd have to maybe choose, to get what I think you're asking for, I think you'd have to maybe choose ten businesses that you wanted to specifically look at and run their particular usage reports, and that would probably give you an answer to that. But, I mean.
We did just do a lot of energy conservation program. We had to in the Gorsuch. When we got our Gorsuch fine, part of our fine was the energy conservation program through Vermont.
Right, Vermont Energy. I mean, and, and all of our, you know, I mean, Antioch, they're, they're growing. I mean, there is no question, they've got more buildings going online, but I am sure their energy usage is down because, and it will be significantly more when that solar array is, is live. I don't think it's live yet, is it, Johnny?
No, it's not back on the line yet.
Um, and, and I think YSI has gone through some energy efficiency projects. The schools have gone through energy efficiency projects. We have here too, so. All of our major users are on, I, I, I think it's, it's good news that it is energy efficiency, not reduction in production.
I think that we might be able to ask Efficiency Smart to bring us some information on what some of the larger businesses have maybe done.
In terms of like, doing a rate study, um, can AMP, since there are, do they provide that as a service at all?
AMP probably does, but if we're gonna do a rate study, um, we're gonna have to look at a lot, all of our rates on all of our enterprise funds, so we may wanna do it through something like RCAP, who, they do, um, rate studies on all utilities.
Cause I thought they were just water and sewer.
I think, no, they, I think they do all of them, and we can certainly contact them.
It looks like all of our, we need it in all of them, so, um, so I would recommend that we do rate studies.
I can, I can contact.
So I don't know if the rest of council agrees.
I agree, yeah.
Looking a lot of red there.
Well, and it's, it's something that Melissa and I were gonna recommend anyway.
Yeah.
So I can contact RCAP and see.
It would be good to probably have, I would rather have, you know, get, you know, if we need a, an adjustment, like particularly in electric, to deal with, to deal with this, uh, you know, a larger, but to, um, institute, you know, just as a matter of course, that it's gonna go up because our expenses always go up, and, um, so that we're not, it seems like we repeatedly get caught unawares.
Well, and, and most utilities, or RCAP, AMP, most of the, the, those entities will suggest that you put in at least a small increase every year.
One or two percent.
Yes, even if it's minimal, you have to offset the increases in your costs to do that.
And you're, you're aware of John Courtney Wright. He's our electric rate consultant.
Yeah.
And because of the whole AMP situation, he may, will probably need to consult.
Right.
Um, with RCAP.
I know that we're running, um, very short on time right now. Um, the water fund has been something that I've been obsessing over lately, and, um, Suzie Yon actually put this sheet that's being passed around together because our revenues are, the revenues that you see that I projected out to twenty-fourteen, I was attempting a conservative approach. Um, however, I think that we're more likely going to end this year where we ended last year, even though there was a rate increase. And part of that is, if you take a look at this, this is comparing thirteen to fourteen, we have the same number of users for the most part. I mean, it fluctuates by like five or six. And, um, the usage is down, and the revenues that we were able to fully realize in July as a result of the April first increase is offsetting that reduced use, which is not uncommon. You raise the rates, people, you're gonna use less, because it costs more. So basically, the, the rate increase that we had, um, put into play is basically offsetting that reduced use.
And you have to remember that the filter was down from April to August, Joe?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, April to August, and if you look at the.
That I think more than, than the rate increase.
Yeah.
We were telling people, please, observe. And people were saying, I haven't done laundry in three weeks.
Taken a shower.
I know, I know people were, were drastically reducing their use, and I don't think that had as much to do with the.
Well, and if that's the case, that may, and, you know, that may adjust and, and, you know, level itself out now that the filter's back up working and people are getting back to normal use, although we're going into the wintertime, so it'll go down.
If you look at usage.
It's not reflected.
The meters are being red, so if, if you look at April, that was March. And when the filter went down, you can tell, you can see that impact in, in the May read. It, it was down. Those are, those are gallons in the thousands, so it was a seven-hundred-thousand gallon reduction in the month of April when it was red in May. So we have to think about that when it's red in May, it's, it's, it's looking at the month pre- previous. So I've been obsessing over the water fund because of this rate increase that occurred, and it hasn't done so hot, but there's been a number of factors that have came into play here.
Why do we have fewer customers in July, like such a?
Okay, July, that, it's highlighted in blue there, and we're not sure what happened there because the usage on there is a crazy outlier of a number. And we literally, we're looking at this information today to try to put something together for you guys so that you could see in a really clear way kind of what's happened to the water fund. So July is an extreme outlier, and I'm not sure what happened with that.
July of twenty thirteen.
Yeah, thirteen. Is that what you were talking about, Laura, in blue?
Yeah, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's an outlier, and I'm not really sure what happened because the usage is like half of what it normally is, which is weird.
And the number of customers is half of what it normally is.
Yeah, I don't know.
How is it that there's fluctuation in the number of customers like that? Is it just like?
Well, within a month, it could be because somebody moved out and somebody hasn't moved back in yet, so they could've finaled out and somebody might not have taken their place in that residence yet.
It shouldn't fluctuate by eight hundred people.
That looks like that, that was a mistake. I mean, that, that had to be a billing that we're probably never gonna be able to recover from.
Yeah, July, July is weird, and I'm not sure what the deal is with that. Because there was, there was also, well, that, no, I, I'm not sure what happened.
Looks like a serious.
But yeah, it's.
Could you please, I, once we get past this, because obviously there's no great rush now, but look back at the billing and just make sure that the billing was all done correctly for that month?
Yeah.
Just, just to make sure.
Yes.
Yeah, that, that had to be a mistake, yeah.
So, um, if, I just, I guess I basically just wanna draw everybody's attention to the fund balance projections where it states very clearly kind of where we are gonna end fourteen with those enterprise funds and when we're gonna begin fifteen. So deficit spending is not an option to start the year off, so.
I think we probably need another emergency water rate increase, I hate to say it, but, um, before we even do a rate study, we can't go into it with this kind of problem looming, especially where we're gonna be having to build a new plant. We'd have to fund that plant.
Exactly. Melissa and I can, uh, look at that and bring something back to council. I don't know if we have it for next time, but we can have it for the, the next meeting after that, I think, don't you?
And I know that, um, the five-year projection was, um, suggested to bring to the next meeting, but kind of where we're at with the enterprise funds, unless we have some sort of a solution moving forward is to, you know, what, how we're going to try to alleviate this in fifteen, it's kind of hard to project out because without a rate increase in sight right now, or even, uh, you know, a, a percentage, if, you know, something that's even suggested at this point, it's really gonna be hard to project out what could happen. I mean, I can look at expenditures and I can look at revenues as they stand, but.
I would say make this a priority first, and then do the revenue projections later.
Okay.
So, so what we're saying is, deal with rate increases in these enterprise funds.
Water fund specifically, maybe.
The solid waste fund has been, it's been a losing game ever since I've started it prior to that. Every, every month in twenty thirteen, I have clear in and outs with that one. You have consumer fees, we pay rumpy, and I can look at every single month with that. And it's, we've constantly been paying them more than what we're getting from consumer. And it's, we've constantly been paying them more than what we're getting from consumers.
But shouldn't, are we marking up that? I mean, are we just doing a unit for unit charge? I mean, at some point, it seems like.
Can't we just do that by, by rote?
Right.
Give the, the, the office permission to just charge whatever Rumpke is charging us?
Well, we also, we're, we're getting charged for tonnage too. And I think that an audit needs to be done because if anybody puts out more than what they're supposed to, they're supposed to have a sticker. I don't know if Rumpke is necessarily paying attention to that. We're getting charged for the tonnage.
They do.
They do?
They do on my street because I had to literally, I had my sticker on, on the tree, and I kept getting notes, so I had to come down and get a new sticker and stick it out of can because they were refusing to take it unless they saw that. They were taking it.
That's good to know.
But it's also because of general village ways. So all of the, all of the parks, all of the downtown. So that number, we need to figure out what that number is, and that number needs to be applied to all of the accounts. I mean, citizens should be paying for general trash remover, removal from the village. Or it's, you know, somebody's got to pay for it. Or it's going to be a tax, you know, I mean, it's.
And I did talk with Patty in the cleanup week. The cleanup week this year ran, it was like $5,900, and we had the general fund pay for that for the cleanup week. But I had, we had to do something to save it from going into the red this year. It was going to be a negative fund balance.
The Rumpke contract, I signed a one-year extension virtually right after I started. I believe it was August. And, so it will expire in August, and, and it'll go out to bid. And I know there are at least two other providers who want to bid on it. So it, what we, what council may choose to do in the meantime, and this is another thing that Melissa and I can look at, is a minimal rate increase for now, and then deal with whatever we need to when the next contract comes in, you know, when it goes out to bid mid-year, and see what happens, what comes back to us at that point to do that.
Yeah, but it's, it's a general philosophy. I mean, citizens, individual households should not only just be paying for the trash that they're generating, somebody's got to pay for the trash that's being generated village-wide, in village-wide parks. It's, it's going to come out of the general fund or, or individual citizens, households are going to pay for it, either through property tax or use tax. So somebody's, you know, it's probably just a, you know, a few pennies a month.
Right.
Yeah, because this is not big numbers, but this seems like this should be, this should not be too difficult to solve.
Right.
It's not, a tiny little increase across the board should make that fund okay.
Right.
So are we saying that we want to have that increase for? Let Melissa and I look at what the village generates. We'll get with Jason and see if he can give us a ballpark on what the village in general generates through the parks, you know, Xenia, Dayton, where we collect the trash from that we dispose of, and see what that comes out to on a tonnage basis.
What difference does that make? Because it still has to get paid for.
Because then that, that would figure into the rate increase for the individual property owners.
But, but why, why would I pay for trash being collected downtown if I don't put any trash downtown? Or in the park if, if I'm not using the park?
Somebody's got to pay for it.
Benefit from not having rats running all over your downtown.
But, but still, though, but parks in downtown, a lot more out-of-town people are coming in probably than the people that live here that are generating the trash. But you're, you're, you're asking the folks that live here to, to, to pay for that. And, you know, and, and I'll use the example at the Gaunt Park. You know, the, we've got the pool and we got softball, Little League games going on with just a select group of people that are generating that trash, but we're going to spread it over the whole. And, you know, I, I don't think the community's going to accept that.
It's, but, but we can't, we can't charge. I mean, I guess we, if we started to charge for every use of Gaunt Park, then we could take some money out of there. Now, the one thing that I think could, is happening downtown to think about is that most of the businesses have dumpsters, private dumpsters, right? So they're paying, you know, they're, they are paying separately, but is there, I, I don't know. I mean, that, that is something to look at, is how, how the trash downtown is being paid for. Because we are paying for it. Somebody's got to pay for it. I mean, if it's going to come out of the general fund, Jerry, I mean, it's, and citizens, it's either going to be paid for by a ta, a tax increase.
Or we pay for it out, you know, but, but still, I mean, I, I think, me personally, I think, you know, a lot of our parks and other things are, are helping the community as a whole, and it should come out of the general fund, not, not tax every individual.
But that's what the general fund is. It's every individual's tax.
But what you're saying is raise, raise my solid waste rate. Okay.
But, but I think that, you know, we provide certain things, parks, and some people use them and some people don't, but it is the community that provides it, and they're available for everyone. And if you try to start saying, well, X, Y, and Z didn't use this, but I, I do think it just has to be a general.
I think there's something to be said, though, should it be put on the trash bill, an individual trash bill? Just like, you know, individuals only, individuals only paying for their household water usage. They're not paying for water usage here in the Bryan Center. I mean, I think that's something we should talk to, we should just direct staff, figure out how we get this paid for, you know, figure out how we.
I don't, I don't know how you are going to get it paid for other than the general fund or an increase that goes directly into the solid waste fund. I mean, those are really the only two ways to pay for that type of a trash pickup that I can think of. Melissa, can you think of any other?
Yeah, either raise rates or transfer it in.
Well, maybe we can just hold off on making that decision, and you guys can think about it.
Yeah. I mean, we are, we're not really, I, I feel like we haven't had an in-depth enough conversation about the enterprise funds, but we really do have to, we have a, we have a, at least a 15-minute executive session that we have to go into. So Melissa, I mean, can we, I know we're doing capital budget next time, can we do a, you know, 15-minute continuation on the enterprise funds?
I think we could probably do both of it.
Gentlemen, are you all available?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Lots of great paperwork, though, and lots of great information.
Sorry to interrupt you so much.
Can I get a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of, for the purpose of discussion of the terms of separation of a public official?
I move that we go into executive session for that said purpose.
Second.
We'll call the meeting back to order. Thanks for your patience during the short executive session. Next announcements. Brian, do you want to make an announcement about the police public forum?
I do. So first of all, I do want to clarify that the time for the forum is, or, you know, we had decided before was seven to eight, to 8:30, not six to 7:30. So just so there's no confusion about that. And we've also decided that our goal isn't to cut off the discussion right at 8:30. So if, you know, people do want to continue to sort of discuss that, we could go as long as nine o'clock. But anyway, you know, the, the published time is seven to 8:30, so I wanted to clear that up.
And where, where is the meeting?
Yeah, so then, this is going to happen in rooms A and B. We've mentioned before that there's free childcare in the Bryan Youth Center downstairs. I think it's probably worth emphasizing again that our format is going to be an introduction. We're, we're going to frame the, the focus, and that focus is going to primarily be on what sort of characteristics are we looking for in a new police chief? What values and attitudes are we looking at in terms of what we want reflected in local policing? And what desires people have in terms of the interaction between police and community? Now, once we frame those issues, we're going to have seven facilitators on hand. We're going to break out into various rooms and areas of the Bryan Center in small groups, and then we'll come back and, and report out on that and wrap up. We got a lot of feedback, FYI, for the Survey Monkey that the HRC set up. We got 29 independent responses. We got a fair amount in the boxes. Chrissy Cruz, who's one of the members of the HRC, is putting together all of those comments for council, for Patty, for everyone to have access to. And HRC is also committed to summarizing everything that comes out of the forum, and we'll have a report by our meeting November 17th. So we'll be able to look at that, and it'll be in the packet. I guess one other thing I do want to emphasize is, you know, the nature of the forum changed because of Tony's separation of employment. And so certain questions that we had anticipated answering, we're not going to be able to answer at this point, but we're going to keep all that information so that those questions will eventually be answered. And that's, again, why we're talking about this being a beginning of this discussion.
And will there be any filming?
Yes, so Channel 5 is going to film the beginning and the reporting out, not the breakout sessions. And it is not going to be filmed, it's not going to be broadcast live, so that it will be broadcast after the fact. Because, yes, we would like people to come, we would like a lot of diversity of input, and we're encouraging everyone on the police chief hiring committee to be there. Hopefully council members will be able to be there. The HRC is also going to be present, helping facilitators to keep it focused on this first goal. And, and I definitely agree with Patty's input that this can be very valuable in helping us in this hiring process, which we're going to look at, you know, a little bit later, what she's laid out, which I think is great.
Thanks, Brian. Also, on October 27th, we have a special meeting, that would be a Monday night at 6:00. And we're going to be having the three candidates for the water treatment plant here, making presentations. There'll be short presentations, there'll be time for question and answer. So we invite the community to that. It will be in council chambers, and that, again, is at 6:00 PM.
I did want to add to that. If you decide that you want to come and watch those presentations, you are welcome to come in. The door will be closed, but citizens are welcome to come in. We're just having one set of consultants in each time, and the other consultants will be waiting out there so that they don't hear each other's trade secrets. So any citizen is welcome to come in through the door and just close it behind them during those presentations.
Should probably have a note to that effect.
Yeah, there will be a note on the door that says that you're welcome to come in.
Okay, thanks.
I also just wanted to briefly mention, I attended the Ohio Municipal League Conference week before last, and it was really incredible, actually. Lot of great contacts. I learned a lot, but in particular, I met a representative from the Department of Commerce who we're going to meet with on Wednesday because we will be able to keep our franchise fees for, from Time Warner. And we, there's some legislation we need to pass to do that, so she's coming on Wednesday to explain that to us. Met someone from Rita who said, you know, anytime we have questions, such as things that came up, she'd be happy to, you know, talk to Melissa about that. And also got to know the Ohio Municipal League folks, so they gave us some contacts related to different services that we might need, such as our RFQ for legal services. So, I mean, it was just, I think, a great experience and a lot of good information.
Thank you for attending.
Yeah, the OML conference is one of the best conferences. I normally hate conferences, but it's one of the best ones.
Yeah, I was impressed.
So, anything else, any other announcements? Okay, moving on to the minutes of the October 6th meeting. Page one. Page two. Page three. Page four. Page five. And page six. I have a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, review of the agenda, anything we want to change or add on the agenda?
Do we need to add, considering signing the letter about House Bill 5? Or will that come, or can we talk about that when we go over the?
Yeah, let's, let's go ahead and add that to, let's put it under old business.
Okay.
Lori, would you want to review the additions?
Right, there was nothing from, from citizens. There was a note from the county health, there was a note from the county health department about deers, that they're in mating season. And it's a lot of people, a lot more people, you know, dying from deers than from Ebola in Ohio. So, but they had some good advice, like flashing your lights because deers can become kind of mesmerized. So if you see a deer, sometimes flashing them can help. Honking your horn, that kind of thing was, most of it's, most of it's very common sense, being conservative, don't drive fast at night, watch for them. Then there was a note about Ebola. There wasn't anything that was particularly new. You've been listening to the news, it was kind of a press report about what the Ohio state government is doing and some programs going on at the library this month.
Thank you. Next, public hearings and legislation. We have Resolution 2014-54 approving the terms of separation for Anthony Pettiford.
Okay, whereas the chief of police entered into an employment agreement with the village on November 19th, 2012, and whereas council and the police chief have agreed to enter into a severance agreement in substantially the same form as Exhibit A attached to this resolution, now therefore the council of the village of Yellow Springs, Ohio hereby resolves that. Section 1, the employment agreement between the village and the police chief shall terminate on September 19th, 2014. Section 2, council hereby accepts and approves the terms and conditions of the severance agreement. Section 3, the village manager is hereby authorized and directed to execute the severance agreement in a form substantially similar to the attached Exhibit A. Section 4, this resolution shall become effective upon its.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, please?
I move to adopt Resolution 2014-54.
Second.
Okay, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Did you want to see if there was any?
Citizen comments? Chrissy?
Just real quick, it says this attachment, but I didn't see the attachment.
That's because we just saw it in, I'm sure that Judy will make it available.
Okay.
Citizens' concerns, now's the time in the agenda for items that are not on the agenda. And three minutes, and come up to the microphone and state your name. Seeing and hearing none, we'll bring it back to council table. Next, we have old business, discussion regarding membership parameters for boards and commissions. And this is kind of a combination of requests that Mary Ann McQueen had made related to some, changing some language for environmental commission, and also some work that Brian House did, generally regarding boards and commissions. So I will turn it over to Brian.
Yeah, well, one of the things is, Mary Ann and I did meet to see if the two of these things could kind of happen in concert, which reflected our discussion from the last meeting. Was it possible to sort of figure out the standardization issues while we were updating the environmental commission? And what we started to realize after an hour of discussing this is that there's a fair amount to look at. And so that prompted me to put together this two-page document of what I think are some of the key issues that we should look at. Mary Ann has agreed that she would like to work with me on this and take it forward. But my sense is that, you know, I, I, I think we've got two steps here. So we've got what we're proposing, or what Mary Ann's proposing for the environmental commission, which I think we should treat separately, and then something that we're going to look at more long-term. But I do think there are lots of things that we should address and, and make recommendations. And ultimately, what I, what I see is that if we could take the best pieces of all our ordinances for the commissions and put them together, that would resolve a lot of maybe the sort of confusion. Because some of the things that, especially in the newer ordinances that have been up. Because some of the things that, especially in the newer ordinances that have been updated, have some really good paragraphs. One of the sessions that I attended workshops at the OML conference did discuss this, and that's why I put in the example of the Code of Conduct from Dublin, Ohio, which I think is something that I'm going to recommend after, you know, we look at this. But at this point, I think it's good to just kind of read, digest. I think we need to do some more work on it, and then come back with some solid recommendations, and an expectation that, once we also get feedback from long-term commission members, that we should do some standardizing.
But you're saying that then Mary Ann's proposed language for environmental commission will be handled as a separate?
That's, that's what I think at this point. Because I, I think it's, there's a lot to dig in here, dig into. And so, yes, I, I feel like, and Mary Ann and kind of agreed that we should separate the two for now, and make this a long-term project, which is kind of what we had talked about even from our retreat, that.
It's been a long-term project, it's been going on for about three or four years now. I think I've had it on my agenda for at least as long as that.
But I do think this takes us a lot closer. I mean, you know, I-
Well, could you read the work I did?
Yeah, I mean, but I, well, let's say it brings it back on the table, right? I mean, and, and, you know, puts it all into maybe some framework that we can bite off of. But I agree, I mean, I think some great work has been done. I guess what I will say is, I'd like to try to keep it as somewhat of a priority, understanding that, you know, water plant and other issues are even more important, but certainly, you know, this is going to help our commissions run more effectively if we resolve some of these questions.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've already prioritized our commissions, I think they're much more active now, so I think that that fits right into.
Right. And I think that's why this is coming up.
Right.
Especially with the Human Relations Commission, a lot of issues have come up about, you know, sort of what is the policy or procedure and whatnot, and so, and I guess that's why it became present in my mind, so, yeah, I agree. And I think it's exciting that our commissions are, are really active.
And I think that we, Brian and I could come up with a, a plan that involves a number of months rather than years to go through this. But it seems like, I think each commission needs to be looked at individually because each is unique, so there's some things, like Code of Conduct is probably something that would be across the board for every commission. But whether there are resident or non-resident members in a commission, or maybe even the numbers or alternates, there's a lot of differences. So I think we need to really look at each commission and the purpose of it, and, and talk to people on the commission, and people who have been on the commissions as we're doing this work.
So what is your proposal related to environmental commission specifically? Because I know you're interested in, in-
Yeah.
-something a little bit more timely on that?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, the proposed language is included in what Judy had in the packet. The only difference is that I think the packet included a dated, not, not the most recent iteration.
Yeah, so you have the-
And the only thing that I noticed between what Judy had in the packet and the more recent one was the number of members for the environmental commission.
Yeah, that's why, that's what-
Which currently is five members, one of which is a councilperson.
Can I ask, when you say five-mile radius of the village, do you, so you're not limiting it to Miami Township?
That's correct. The reason why I did that is because, you know, we're at the northern end, we're pretty close to the northern end of Miami Township, but there are a number of people who, who identify themselves as being part of Yellow Springs, who live just across into Clark County. So that's why I suggested that distance as opposed to the township.
I, I guess I'm still, I'm still a little bit, when it's our commission, I think it, I think that there is something to be said for people that do have a stake, an economic stake in the village. And, you know, even paying Miami Township taxes. People in Clark County aren't paying any tax to the village of Yellow Springs. You know, and I, and I think I also go back to this idea of ex officio members, that, that they're, they're very well maybe, maybe people that would be very valuable to be on a commission, but could they be on as an ex officio as opposed to a, a voting member? That's the-
What do other council people feel about that? I mean, my thought is, so a lot of things dealing with the environment don't stop at a geogra, you know, at a, whatever you-
Political boundary.
Political boundary, yeah.
But that's why you invite them to be on board as ex officio members?
I mean, I'm just, I'm not, I'm not going to hold out on, well, I made two requests, that was one. The other was that, that a member can work in the village, but not necessarily live in the village. And, and I would say that, I feel strong, I do feel strongly about that. Because we, I think we want to have people on the environmental commission that have expertise. And in particular, for example, I'm thinking of Antioch College. We have a really strong presence at the college of people with expertise as well as interest, and they don't necessarily do the knowledge. So, you know, I do, I do feel strongly about being able to have a member who works in the village, which means they would pay taxes, correct?
Well, they would, income tax.
Well, it sounds like, well, I guess it sounds like Karen would be more comfortable for that first one to be-
The township.
To be the township.
Miami Township, yeah.
And are you comfortable with the second one?
Yeah.
Are you comfortable with changing it to Miami Township?
Yes, yeah, I won't, uh-oh.
Well, then, do we need a motion on that?
Well, I think Judy's going to have to, we're going to have to have legislation.
Oh, right, we're going to have to have a legislation.
And the only other thing I would suggest is figuring out the, the terms, because since it's really starting fresh, we had the same thing with the Economic Sustainability Commission, that you might want to have two people with two-year terms, just so everybody isn't turning over.
That's a good point.
You need to set that up.
Staggering the terms.
It's a good idea to have staggered terms.
I guess I have one question here, it says, "One member shall be a member of council appointed to serve at the pleasure of council."
Yeah, that's what they, they all say that.
Is this the way that they all read?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, they don't all read that way, but-
Some of them read that way.
The ones that say that do, use that language, but half of them don't.
We're not very consistent, you know, that's a problem.
Right.
These things got created at different times, different places, under different legal directors, probably. So I suspect that's the difference. I mean, my understanding of that phrase is basically that if council becomes displeased with you, we have the ability to say, "You, you go, we don't want you anymore."
Well, and-
Now, and given that, then, you know, because on most of them we have a primary and an alternate. So does that say that the primary is gone and the alternate steps in, or does that say that council appoints a new primary? That's-
That's interesting. I mean, you would think if the alternate would step into it.
Yeah, I guess I was thinking the appointed-to-serve language was really-
I mean, can we-
It's just a member of the-
Can we just table this as part of the, the research and deliberation that Brian and I'll do and come back to council? Because as he says, the each commission is, speaks differently about how the, the councilperson that's with that commission.
So you're saying just that piece of it will, but at the next meeting you'll have the, the legislation to at least get environmental commission kicked on, off again? Is that what you're?
Oh, yeah, that's, that's usually-
Okay, so you're just, okay.
And just out of curiosity, I mean, do, does anyone have a feeling about what's the best term length? I mean, staggering's one thing, but some of them say three, some of them say four.
Term for the members?
Yeah.
Oh, I think three is good. Do you want to start at two at two years and two at three years, and then three-year terms thereafter? Or do you want three and four? You said two at what?
Two at two years.
And three at three years.
Well, the council member will-
Oh, that's, yeah, that's true.
Council members, yeah, it's, yeah, so two at two years and two at three years.
Okay.
I think that makes sense.
Okay.
You might-
And then three years thereafter.
Right.
And then you might also, with, with PZA and, and Planning Commission, you might just check the charter to make sure that those terms aren't-
Legislated.
-included in the charter for some reason. And you might want, you might want to ask Chris, I mean, when you're talking about those two, you might want to get a legal opinion on lengths, or ask Patty about those.
Okay.
Yeah, start with, yeah, start with Patty always.
One other thing I wanted to mention, since I was looking at all these carefully, and if we're going to start with environmental commission, is three times, it, well, it either says man-made or man's activities, and I thought we should take this opportunity to either say people-made or peoples or something like that.
Or human.
Or human.
Or human, yeah.
One of those two, but-
For you.
Thank you.
Yes.
I actually minored in women's studies, believe it or not.
Come on.
I did.
Whatever kind of language normalization needs to happen, I think is good.
You're looking for extra credit, aren't you?
See, but, but no, seriously, I mean, I think we, we talk about this a lot, and, and we might as well fix those things as well.
While it's coming up for, absolutely.
Okay. Okay, so next meeting, we will specifically have legislation for environmental commission, and then as you're able to report back on the broader commission normalization issues, we will, we will get that on the agenda.
Great.
Thank you. Next, we've been talking about House-
Wait a second.
Oh, excuse me.
I have another question too. So in terms of bringing, approving the members for the environmental commission, should we do that now, or do you want to wait until we? Well, it doesn't exist right now, so you can't really approve any members for it.
So bring that to the next meeting.
Well, it exists, but-
It exists, it's just been-
It's under different terms, it could get a little freighted, so you might want to just do it all at the next.
Yeah, we might just have to-
Be easier.
Just send a note to all those folks.
Oh, okay.
I'll, I'll send an email.
Chrissy?
I'm going to tie this up at the wrong time, I should have maybe said something, citizens' concerns, because this is more about committees. I was a little concerned about the process for selecting the committee to review the system, to review the charter. I understand that there was, you would prefer people that have a legal mindset about that, but then there was the issue at the end, that it had to be people who had, were not currently serving on any other boards or commissions or committees or anything. And then, when it was brought up that we were going to form a police chief search committee, I immediately applied for that, sent emails to all of you saying that I would like to be on that committee, that I have valuable input in, I've known both of the past McKee and Grody, and I'm not saying that that entitled me to be on that committee, but I never heard anything more until I found out that the committee had been formed, and once again I heard that part of the criteria was that you could not be on any board, other boards or committees.
That was not part of the criteria for the police chief.
All right, well, that was a concern for me, because I don't want to feel like because I'm on HRC that that excludes me from participating in other things.
No, that-
Because I'm not just HRC, I have other interests as well, so.
And that had nothing to do with the choices for the chief selection committee.
But then why didn't I, why did, I didn't hear anything more about how the committee was formed, and then I hear, I had expressed interest, so I would think that just as a courtesy, I should have been, you know, well, this is, we've already decided, I, I didn't hear anything back.
I did even-
I mean, you did say thank you-
Yeah, I did email you, yeah.
But what I'm saying is, I didn't hear anything back about, well, we were formed until after it was already formed, and I just felt left out.
There's actually still one person out there who's not been selected yet, so it's not completely formed, but if you would like to talk about that a little bit after the meeting, I'd be happy to talk about it.
Yeah, I would like to.
But there was a, I remember reading a letter or an email in the package that, that I thought had gone to Chrissy.
It did say thank you for your interest, and Lori wrote, emailed me back. All I'm saying is, when I sent the original email, all I heard back was from Lori saying thank you, and from Patty saying thank you, and then I didn't hear anything more, and then all of a sudden I heard the committee's been formed, and I'm like, well, I expressed interest. I, I mean, I could understand if I was not chosen to be on the committee, I'm not saying I should have been, I'm just saying, as a courtesy, I, I feel like I should have heard back of, okay, we formed the committee, or we're doing it this particular way, or something like that, so that was my concern.
Okay. Thanks, Chrissy.
Thanks, Chrissy.
Ted.
Wendy with Ted Donnell. I think that you need to take the Board of Zoning Appeal out of the general discussion about commissions. We're very, very strictly mandated on how we conduct, how we do the thing because of the zoning code, and we're a judiciary board. So we don't really follow the same steps as a commission or really any other board because we're judiciary.
Is that the same for Planning Commission?
No, it's just easy. Easy, it's different, yeah, it's distinct.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions about the commissions? Okay, moving on to just a short discussion about House Bill 5. That is the state legislature continuing to try to take money from municipalities, finding, it started out as, isn't, is it House Bill 5 still? I thought it was in the Senate now, so it's, but they're still calling it House Bill 5?
Yeah.
Okay, well, it's morphed, and supposedly the, the language was going to be normalized, and, and all of the input that was being put in from the municipalities to make it more fair and equitable and less impactful on municipalities was all going to be changed. What was it, ends up, no, the legislators and the Ohio Chamber and all the people that came up with the language to begin with had never had any intention of normalizing that language. So, House Bill 5 will be tremendously hurtful, probably honestly not as much for us, because we're a small community, as it will for other communities. And so we're back on another letter-writing campaign, resolution-passing campaign, and actually, there happens to be a meeting on Wednesday with Senator Widener, it's in the Senate now. A group is going to meet with Chris Widener in, in Springfield Wednesday morning to talk to him about it, so, but, but Brian has brought back some information from the OML conference about it.
Yeah, there was a, a rally about this and a lot of great information. I also shared sort of what I've been calling the FAQs, but, you know, the, the piece that was double-sided that gave a lot of input about what the impacts would be. One of the things that I'm sure we might all remember is that back in January, we did pass a resolution showing our opposition to this. After I inquired a little bit further, I found out that many municipalities have passed multiple resolutions, are signing this letter, and the Ohio Municipal League is really encouraging, you know, all of us to, I call it re-up, but remind again, as, as the House and Senate are coming back in session, that we are opposed to this. And so I did want us to, you know, discuss and, and, you know, decide whether we would sign off on this letter, so.
Is it, is it for us, should we redo that letter on our letterhead, or is it simply for us to sign onto a large?
My understanding is that they've, they're doing it in kind of all of the above. So we could put together another resolution, we could sign off on this letter and add it to the others, or we could put it on our own leather, letterhead. Actually, I caught a grammatical error that I asked Judy to correct if we're going to use this one. So it's sort of up to us, I guess one issue is being timely, you know, since the elections are going to happen in a couple weeks, and, and we wanted to get up there, you know, so.
And it would actually be a good idea to hand-carry something to Chris Widener on Wednesday.
Right.
Right.
So let's, I mean, I would be satisfied with-
Corrected, text corrected.
Yes. But do you think it should, I think it should be on our letterhead, not our OML letterhead.
Me too.
I think it will make more of an impact if they get it on a lot of different people's letterheads.
Right, so let's do that, and then, I don't know if we all, what do we do about signatures?
Why don't we just have it signed by Karen?
On behalf of council.
Okay.
Bring it to you tomorrow.
And, and the biggest concern here is- And the biggest concern here is that there are legislators who do want to do away with municipal income tax. Their goal is to do away with municipal income tax. So we do have a real problem. I mean, there is, there is a real potential crisis pending. It's not going to happen next year, it's not going to happen anytime soon. But, but there is this goal to totally reformat the taxing formula in the state of Ohio. So to make us more business-friendly.
To designate communities?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's like, it's like, it's just as long as, as long as the state budget looks good, then it just trickles down to us and it goes to the localities anyway.
Well, and this is what gets, then what municipalities do is they start depending on fees and forfeitures and anything they can to keep especially their police departments going. And that, it, that's what's, that's part of what's going on in Ferguson and places like that. So you end up criminalizing people in order to pay for your government-based government services.
Any comments or questions from citizens? So I am going to turn the table over to Lori for the library roof discussion. I'm recusing myself.
Thank you. Okay, do you want to start us off, Patty?
We began a discussion last time about the library roof and the cost estimate. Ted was out of town, unfortunately, he is here now. The cost estimate to repair the library roof, excuse me, very long weekend, was $258, five something, Ted? Did not bring it with me, unfortunately. Council had, Ted's original cost estimate was $204,000. Council had put $150,000 aside into the capital improvements and it's my understanding that another $50,000 was supposed to come out of the Energy Efficiency Fund, which doesn't have any money in it this year. So the discussion at the last meeting was where to make up that shortfall. And as Melissa pointed out, we can do it out of the Facilities Improvement Fund, but we will not be able to do anything else out of that fund. And Ted is here to answer any questions that council might have. There were some questions about why does the structure need to be changed as far as the slope of the roof? And I explained about the fact that it's a flat roof right now, it's retaining water, it leaks. Ted, do you want to come up and give further information about why the structure, the physical structure of the roof needs to be changed?
Yes, my name is Ted Donnell. When I did my energy audit and assessment of the building, that budget came through that process with basically replacing what was there. Replacing what was there was leaving all of the roof drains and all of the drainage as it was. There was a lot of pushback by the Library Commission and the library and some of the staff folks about these internal roof drains leaking and wanting to look at alternatives for a single slope roof. So we came back with a single slope roof solution and that's what was budgeted. And that's primarily some of the money that is different than the original budget. The other thing that's happened is that labor prices have gone up and material prices have gone up in three years. But the thing that we're gaining from this is an average of an R-38 roof. It's a white reflective roof. It's a 20-year guarantee. It has, because of the type of roof that it is and the fact that we weld the seams, this roof can have a coating put on it after the warranty is up. That'll give it another 15 years and you can do that twice. So there's literally 50 years' worth of life out of this roof for the money. We'll never buy another roof at the cost of this, it's got to be a complete tear-off. Part of the other reason that the price went up is that we have to build a parapet wall on top of the stone that's there to accommodate the extra thickness of the slope, to get it to slope all the way down to the north. The village did invest in stormwater extensions down limestone to be able to collect this stormwater that we were waiting on, because we couldn't take all this stormwater off of the roof as it was and just dump it on the ground. It would have just tried to find its way across properties and it would have been a mess. So that's been taken care of.
I have some questions. Would this roof result in greater energy efficiency?
Absolutely.
That's what he was saying, yeah.
Then, I seem to recall that we had this agreement with the library that we would increase the rent to reflect the decreased energy cost.
My recommendation in getting library approval was that they pay approximately $16,500 a year in energy costs, utility costs. They pay a dollar a year rent. So the idea was that the library would enter into a lease agreement with the village for $16,500 a year in lease and the village would pick up the cost of the utility. So they would pay the utilities. So the village is making money on putting, investing in higher energy cost solutions to the, to the building and then seeing those in savings by getting the rent.
Have, has that been actualized?
No.
Yeah, because part of the energy was the windows too, wasn't it?
Oh, yeah, everything that we've done, high-efficiency mechanical systems. You know, the next phase in doing water is lifting it to another level. So we're, we're bringing the building up energy-wise, much, much higher than it was originally designed and doing the best we can, so...
But, but the agreement for the 16.5 was once it's all completed?
No, I, it was my understanding that Mark was starting those negotiations. I thought that it was actually executed and then when it went to Laura. Laura said she didn't have it, I thought she was taking care of it. And it just kind of keeps getting, can, keeps getting kicked down the road.
Okay.
But, you know, and that's a big strategy, because if, you know, if y'all are landlords and you're leasing a building and they're paying for the utilities and you're investing and saving them money, you're getting ripped off, you know? And we don't have to have an R-38 roof or a white roof for that matter, we can put up. And we don't have to do anything with roof drains. You know, if it, if it's becoming your problem, you'd have a whole different set of criteria to consider.
So it sounds like there might be some logic in, in negotiating this before this is fully finalized?
Well, we're about to lose a year.
I know.
And if we lose this year, we're going to lose...
It's going to go up in price too.
Oh, significantly after the first. But the stuff that's in, we don't have any warranty on the roof anymore. The roof is failing significantly. It's soaked underneath the existing metal skin that's on the roof. And, you know, if it were a typical building where there's not a lot of precious materials, that's one thing, but this is a library and we have to take extra steps to protect the contents. So, you know, certainly my recommendation is let's get this done. We waited all summer because we were waiting on Patty to appear. You know, it's another one of those transitions. I mean, we've been through them and through them and through them and it's just, we're at a critical mass.
Jerry, has this issue about the rent ever come up at the Library Commission meetings?
Uh, no, not since I've been on.
So you're...
But then again, we only meet every other month, so...
So are you, you don't know if they are or not aware of this...
I know Carl Cologne.
Potential agreement.
Because we've had discussions.
Yeah, they're aware of it, but, you know, we met, really had a discussion.
Do we negotiate it with, who do we negotiate it with? Wouldn't it be Carl Cologne?
Yeah, it would have been the manager and Carl.
Yeah. So I, it probably, it might not go through the commission. And I think we should just, at this point, try to have the conversation as we're trying to figure this out.
I mean, either way, we own the building and the roof needs to be fixed.
Yes.
So I, you know, I guess my question to council is, would you want to go ahead and proceed with the roof? I mean, one of the things that's in my, will be in my report today is that we got no submissions on the Sutton Farm RFQ. So there's a really good chance that's not going to go this year. So that frees up a little bit more money on that, so, you know...
I think we better...
Is this, is this the best and most and least expensive option? I mean...
Well...
In, in construction, quality and dollars are in parallel lines. It's, you know, you get what you pay for.
Yeah.
I think to get another 50-year roof on that building is the way to go. You know, are there different systems that may cost less or more? Probably, but are they going to give you the efficiencies of a white membrane roof? No, because of the insulation values and things like that, you just can't match it. So I would say of the systems that I've dealt with, this is definitely the, it may be slightly more higher than the cheapest alternative, but you do get a payback with the insulation and you absolutely get a payback in the longevity, even though it's 20-year warranty to be able to patch and repair and coat it. Basically, what you're doing, you're coating the system after 15, and you get another 15-year guarantee. Then you coat it again, you get another 15 years. That's, that's unheard of.
Ted, I know that the prices will change in 15 years, but if you were going to coat a roof like this today, how much would that cost approximately?
Probably about 10 grand.
Does anyone have any other questions for Ted?
And there is still time this...
You can get it on the chair.
Construction season to do it.
Yeah, I mean, they're waiting, but once it gets into December, we're really good.
We have, have we put it out for bid?
Yes, the prices...
Okay, that is the...
This was our last.
That's below one bid.
Yeah, this was our last.
So we're just figuring out how to pay for it.
Okay.
Right. Thanks, Ted.
So do we need to make a decision?
Well, it, yeah, there has to be legislation to sign the, the contract with the person who's awarded, the company that's awarded the bid. So that would have to come to the next meeting, so...
Yeah, so I guess bring forth the legislation and...
And I will, I will start talking to Carl and Patty about...
Sense for how we, sense for how we'll, how we'll pay for it.
You can do a letter of intent to kickstart the contract awarding, to have them, you know, ordering the material along with...
Oh, you mean alerting them that this is coming?
Before the legislation.
We intend to...
Yeah, I think we should do that.
I see you, Uta. All right, all right, yeah, come forward, Uta.
Uta Sheng, I just wonder, in the meantime, this will take some time and I was just thinking, listening, I know we did a lot of work on the library and that roof was done when? Do you remember, anybody?
Well...
15 years ago.
15 years ago, okay.
Yeah.
In the meantime, we're getting winter and we're getting a lot of ice accumulation. I just wondered if before the contract, before this work is done, and who knows how long that will be, how long do you think it might be, Ted?
It'll be done by probably the middle of December, late December.
That's good, before winter. I was just wondering if it's leaking right now, if there, is there anything that we can do in the meantime to prevent damage down below through the materials?
I think they're, they're already doing what they can, right, Ted? They're already taking whatever preventative...
Because that's a good idea to sort of shore it up until the work is done?
Well, they'll do it in phases and we'll work with the library on what phase of getting done when. So there are things that need to be covered up, but they'll take care, they'll protect it every night. So they'll go, they'll make sure they do it in proper weather. Every night they seal it, make sure that it's covered up.
Oh, that's good, thank you.
So council wants me to bring the legislation to the next meeting?
Well, I mean, should we discuss? Because it sounded like you started to talk about how we would pay for this.
Well, there's $150,000 that's already set aside. Even, there were $50,000 set aside for Sutton Farm that we won't be using unless council decides to go ahead and hire a, an architect to draw those plans up. At this point, what I would rather do on the Sutton Farm building is to get it done right. And I am, actually have a meeting scheduled at 1 o'clock tomorrow with Johnny and Jason to go out there, walk around, see what we can do to get everything under roof for the winter of some kind. And then I think it would be better to take that $50,000, put it towards the library roof. And then there's money in there, as Melissa said, to pay for the rest of it.
As long as we don't do any other...
Correct.
In the what?
Facilities improvement.
We just can't do anything for the rest of the year.
That's correct.
Like the way to go.
Yeah, I mean, because I think that we should look at that letter of intent idea that Ted mentioned then, because it seems like we're all in agreement.
I think we need to get this going.
Okay.
So, thank you. Thanks, Ted.
Thanks.
Okay, and call Karen Beckin? Yeah, thank you, Paul.
So do we need to vote on that, or...
Uh, no, because the legislation will come next.
Okay.
All right.
Now, where's the new? Uh, let's see.
Hotel excise.
Oh, hotel, discussion regarding an excise tax on hotel accommodations. So this came up when we were talking about revenue sources. We do sometime in, probably summer of 2015, have for the first time a large enough hotel to consider adding a hotel excise tax. So I will, Patty's been doing some research and she's actually consulted with Chris Conner, legal counsel, so she has a lot to report.
One of the things that council asked for last week was a sample ordinance to bring forth on the hotel excise tax. There is one in your packet, was one in your packet. You should have found a more in-depth copy at your, at your seats. This came in late this afternoon when Chris, what Chris did was he essentially took this legislation and wrote it to go into the codifieds. Okay, so these are actually, they say the same thing, just this one's wordier because a lawyer did it. I was going to say. But...
It's got definitions.
It has the, spoken like a true attorney, Ryan.
Oh.
It has the definitions, it is, it is designed to go right into the codifieds. This is simply a working document for council to look at and begin to review. Essentially, it's a 3% tax on the room or it also applies to any other bill they may incur at the facility. So let's say they go to the restaurant, they eat in the restaurant and they charge that through the room. That's, that gets the 3% as well. Okay, and it's only on, it's only on, I don't want to say facilities, but that have more than, I believe it's six rooms.
Five.
Five or more.
Yeah.
Five, okay, it's five rooms.
So this would apply to Arthur Morgan House and Springs Motel?
Yes, if they, yeah, they have six rooms.
They have six.
Springs is outside of Yale Springs.
Oh, is it? Okay.
So, I mean, as I said, it's a work in progress, it's a living, breathing document. We can make changes. This is simply one that I had, got from a place in Warren County that has one in effect that has been in effect for years and years. So this is not necessarily the way ours has to read. Council can look at it, make changes, suggestions. This is not going to be voted on next meeting or anything like that.
But 3% is the most we can charge, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And just to be clear on the amount, what it can be levied on or what it needs to be paid on, it's, it doesn't sound to me as if the conference, wedding, those kinds of...
Events.
Event have the tax on it.
It's, it's your room and what gets charged to your room, so...
So if you don't pay, so if you go down to the, if you pay in the restaurant with a credit card, you don't pay the extra 3%?
Correct.
So that means that people that come in to use the restaurant and aren't staying at the hotel don't have to pay it, okay?
I had one question. I noticed that the hotel is, is supposed to pay on a monthly basis. I was, I was wondering whether, it seems like it would be easier to do it on a quarterly basis?
Again, something that council can...
We can tweak it.
That's, that's the way Green County CBB does it. I get, when I go to, I'm on their board and they pay, hotels pay monthly. I mean, I think for us, I mean, it's a smaller hotel, it may be easier to do it, to do it quarterly and we're talking about two places. quarterly, and we're talking about two places, so it may be easier to do it quarterly.
What is, I'm sorry. Well, I was just going to say, where does this money go into the general fund?
General fund. Goes into the general fund, yeah.
Are there other things that, any council member or Patty notes in this that we would want to change?
I mean, I haven't read it that closely, we just got it.
Yeah, I mean, what I would suggest is that council takes it, looks through it, you know, you can, you can email me your concerns, and I can put it together and for the next packet, that these are things that came back from various council members, so it can be in the next packet, and you can look at it and talk about which ones you may want to change or discuss further.
And, and maybe it would, so, so it just comes directly from the hotel? It goes to Melissa, it doesn't have to go through the county auditor, it doesn't, so it goes, comes directly to the village, okay? Did she have any input on this? I mean, I.
No.
Other than she'd like that extra money?
Melissa's been a little tense about the budget, so not trying to put anything else.
Well, tell her we're trying to find money for her.
Tried to not put too much else on her.
Yeah, no, she's been great, I have to say. I've been very pleased with Melissa's work.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Good. I, I mean, my only thought would be, I, I'm not sure, you know, that we need to delay doing this, you know, so, I mean, once there's time to, you know, read it and consider it, then.
But we're talking, we're talking nine months before.
Wow.
We really need to worry about it. And I, you know, given the fact that we've got two, that this is involving two places, I think it wouldn't be a bad idea to make personal notifications.
Yes.
To those two businesses.
Yeah, I'd like to hear if they have any feedback.
Who would do that?
I think Patty could do that.
There's a question.
Comments or questions from citizens? Becky?
In reading this, and I know it's just preliminary, but who would be the designee, designee to receive the tax funds? I don't think anybody in the village has had responsibility of collecting taxes before with the financial.
Yes.
That would be her responsibility?
Correct.
To do that?
Yes.
In your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Becky Campbell.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you. Thanks, Patty. Next on the agenda is manager's report.
Okay, as I said earlier, we did not get any returned bids on Sutton Farm. We had several companies that were telling us they were going to submit their bids, and it was due at 1 o'clock today, and we did not get any returned bids. So as I said, I'm meeting with Jason and Johnny tomorrow at 1 o'clock to go over, you know, what we can do out there to get everything undercover for the winter, and we'll, we'll go from there and see, you know, what we need to do.
And so there's no response? I mean, do you think that it was, I think there was some discussion of the adequacy of the documents?
I think part of it was because, some, some people didn't respond because there were no schematics or architectural drawings. I think other people didn't respond simply because they were concerned with the site, and they weren't sure that the drainage and the level out there is a little bit off, and it would have to be compensated for, and I think that it had, it probably had a lot to do with the fact that there were no actual drawings. So, as was mentioned earlier, the three finalists for the water consultant process are scheduled to be here next Monday at, we're starting at 6 o'clock. You, first will be HNTB up first at 6 o'clock. At 6:45, they'll do a 15 to 20-minute presentation, then there'll be 15 to 20 minutes for questions. Then at 6:45 will be Burgess and Nyepal, same thing, and then 7:30 will be Hazen and Sawyer and LJB. The Assistant Village Manager Search Committee did meet last week and reviewed 15 applications. We had many, many more than that, but those were the 15 top that had both experience and education. We did choose some for interviews. I have not set those interviews yet, but I'm currently doing the reference checks, and we're checking with other, other sources to see how that goes. There is a paper in your packet that has the tentative process on it, although the next meeting is not until November 5th, Karen, I think, is that correct? So we're trying to set the interviews for November the 5th, and so that will be when we interview, I think, five or six people for that.
Patty, do you recall how many applications we got total?
15. 15, 20.
I'd say it was about 45, wasn't it?
35. It was close to 50. It was close to 50.
And did we?
There were 15 that had education and experience, there were 20 that had education, and there were 20-something that had just experience, I believe.
And did we kind of follow sort of the protocol that we used for the village manager search? Is that why we got so many applications, or?
We put it out in, we put it on the OML website, we put it on our website, we advertised it in the Yellow Springs News, we put it on the OCMA website, which is the Ohio City Management, City County Management Association. We did not put it on ICMA because they were very, very expensive. We put it in the Dayton Daily News. I believe that is, that's all. I think that's the only places we put that.
Great.
Do you feel good about?
I think we have some great applicants. Karen, do you want to?
Yeah, I, I think there's some, some good ones, and, you know, we've started some reference checking and, and calling, and really impressive, I mean, I was, I think it's, I think it's an easier, you know, it's, it's kind of an easier job. I think that's probably why we got more, you know, I think there's more younger, you know, people that are, that are at that point in their career also, that are looking for this kind of a step, as opposed to somebody looking for a management posi, a full village manager position. So I think it was, it's a great opportunity for us, and I'm very excited about the folks.
And I also just wanted to say, I really appreciate the, the process that you've put together, you know, to make it inclusive and, and get lots of feedback, you know, and same for the police chief. I just think that's great.
Is, do you talk about the process? And I know the hiring is up to you, is there something that the rest of us need to know? Brian, you said you talked about the process that you put together, you know, the fact that I'm seeing is the schedule, so.
Right, well, just, you know, the fact that there's going to be council interviews, and there's going to be a meet and greet, just, I guess what I'm getting at when I said protocol is I feel like, you know, we, we did a great job in hiring Patty, and I like that we're following that process, and, you know, now we can maybe do it on our own.
Yeah.
So we learned a lot from that.
Yeah, because, I mean, Patty wouldn't have to make this as public as she does.
Right.
And so it's really nice.
No, but Chrissy had asked the question.
Right.
Right. And I, yeah, and I don't want to lose sight of the fact that both of these positions are Patty's decision to make.
Right. Yep.
That said, the, the police chief application period is open until October 31st. I have included that tentative schedule in your packets as well. As I said, I am, I do still have one more person waiting on them to respond for the committee. I had several, several residents that wanted to participate, and obviously can't have everybody on there, but Chrissy was one of them, and I, I will speak with her after the meeting. But it's going to be, the, the police chief search committee is going to be far larger than the AVM search committee. It's going to have a lot more participants in it. The AVM search committee right now is five people, and includes Karen and myself, Melissa Van's aunt, Chris Bonjourno, who is a resident, and Lois McKnight, who is the Assistant Administrator and Economic Development Director for Deerfield Township in Warren County. So she has the professional end, as well as Chris has the professional end of things, and then, you know, the rest of us from the village. The police chief commission, committee will have council members, employees, citizens, police department employees that they chose from amongst themselves, they voted on who they wanted to have. And also, a police chief, who's my police chief in Milford, where I live right now, has agreed to sit on the committee and help us from that end of things. So that will also be, that's also in your packets. Again, that's tentative schedule, and I will get that moving along as quickly as possible. We've talked about a meet and greet for the police department, and we have that set up for 5 o'clock on Monday, November 17th. Council will be meeting at 6 o'clock that night for another budget session. The meet and greet for the police department will go from 5 o'clock until 6:30 in A and B. The officers will be on hand, please stop by, meet them, talk to them about any concerns. It will be not only officers who have been here forever, but all the new officers, everyone is going to be there. I do have one thing for council that is not on my report, and I'm going to pass these around, and I do have some copies for the folks out there as well, if I can find them. We have a problem with billing from the Green County Planning Commission. If you want to pass those down, Karen, and I will find the copies together. What in the heck did I do with them? Green, as we neared the end of the year, I asked Melissa to please look into the billing from Green County and make sure that they were caught up. To that end, she contacted Stephen Anderson with Green County and asked him to catch the bills up. Then subsequently, I got a bill from, two bills from Stephen. One was for January and February of 2013, and the other was for March and April of 2013. So I was hoping that was a typographical error, and I contacted Stephen, who tells me it is not a typographical error, and that, in fact, they have not billed us for 2013 or 2014. So I asked him to catch those up as quickly as he could, and I pulled out the contract that we have with them, and you can see the wording there, and I apologize to the folks in the audience, I made a bunch of extra copies, which I cannot seem to lay my hands on right now. But the contract wording specifically says, "The contractor shall submit to the village manager certified timesheets with a description of services rendered with each invoice for payment, which said invoices shall be received by the seventh day following the month in which the services were rendered." So that, what that means is technically, when we ask him right now, the only thing that we are technically on the hook for is last month.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So when I talked to Stephen, I said, the first thing is, he should probably not expect to get paid for anything in 2013, because it's a completely different fiscal year, and that money is no longer allocated for that purpose. He, just late this afternoon, I received a billing from Stephen for only his services for the rest of 2013 and all of 2014. This does not include any of Tamra's service, because she is currently out of town on a family emergency, and he can't verify her hours. My question is, if he doesn't have timesheets, how are we verifying anybody's hours? So, I mean, this wouldn't even probably be coming to light, except that we ask for them to catch it up, because we're trying to close out the budget year. So at this point, my recommendation to council will be with.
How could he not have billed us in 2013?
I don't know.
He's not, I mean, he's not billed us, he, he did not bill until he was asked.
Right.
I mean, in the timesheets, how, how is Tamra going to be putting together timesheets, even reconstructing 2014, let alone 2013?
And, and I can tell you that since I've been here, I've kind of monitored her hours and, and his estimate, just in an email that he sent me today, his estimate of, of 70 to 80 hours a month, I, I would dispute that fairly vigorously, just from what I've seen and knowing what meetings that they've had.
Although my understanding is that she is working in the office, in their office on our work.
Exactly.
It's not just.
Yes.
The time she's spending in our office.
And, and I did note that in my email back to him, that I, you know, have obviously no idea how much time she spends at the Green County offices that's dedicated to us. But for the four bu, the four months that I have of hers in 2013, and for all of Stephen's for 2013 and 14, it's $19,214.80. But that would increase significantly once Tamra's hours were added into that, simply because she devotes more time to, to our issues than Stephen does. So my recommendation to council at this point would be, this would come out of the professional services line in the, the general fund, which is the question that Mary Ann had asked, what comes out of that line? This is one of the things that would come out of that line. We have some other obligations that have to be paid out of that line this year. My recommendation to council would be, pay Green County whatever is left in that line at the end of the year, once the other obligations are met, and call it even, because it's probably going to be more than we would technically have to pay them because of the billing issue not being in a timely manner, but it's going to be substantially less than I'm sure that what they will want to bill us.
What's your estimate of what that would be?
It's probably very close to the 20,000 that we're talking about, without Tamra's services.
Right.
So let me, so, so let me understand, so the total, you have in your hands right now invoices totaling $19,214.80?
Correct.
And that includes four months of 2013?
For Tamra.
For Tamra, but not Stephen?
It includes all of 2013 and all of 2014 for Stephen, but only four months of 2013 for Tamra.
For Tamra. I mean, that's just all so confusing. It's ridiculous.
So there's, there's all of 2014 plus the last eight months of 2013 for Tamra, that I have no idea what the bill is.
How could he not?
Well, I don't even want to tell you about the meeting, well, you've sat through the meetings, the Green County Regional Planning meetings about their own budget. When I went to speak to county commissioners about Green County Regional Planning, my first words to them were, "We're helping to support this organization."
So, and to further clarify, so the 13,000 referenced in the second paragraph, that's Tamra's?
That was, that was Stephen, that was Stephen and Tamra for the first four months of 2013.
And then there's an extra 6,000 for Stephen, only for the rest?
Correct.
To make the 19,000?
Yeah, he emailed me those like late this afternoon.
Okay.
And are those detailed, which you would consider detailed timesheets, or just hours?
What they say is, it just has, it has Prepare BZA Planning Commission cases, Permit Review and Issuance, Field Inspections, meaning it has different services here.
And number of hours?
And then a number of hours for Stephen here with his rate of pay multiplied out.
So if I understand you legally, because of the way the contract is written, we're only obligated, as you said, for last month, I guess?
Actually, you know, technically, we're not even obligated for that, because it's past the seventh of the month.
And so you're suggesting we take the professional services line item for?
For this year.
Does that, for council, or for?
Which, in the general fund, there's a professional services line, and I'm not sure exactly which one, Melissa, take this out of, I'll have to look at the budget again. But there should be approximately $20,000 left in that line after we have paid for the other professional services that.
So right now, it's professional services divided among council and administration, but you're, you meaning sort of like lumping it all?
Yeah, yes. Well, there's, there's one that she takes it out of, but you could do that if that's what council so chose.
Oh, no.
Normally, it comes out of mine, I believe.
Okay, that would be it.
Mine and Jason's.
Administration, I guess. That's administration, probably. And just whatever's left after we've paid for the things we...
Correct. I would not recommend trying to make any other kind of a transfer appropriation at this point. I mean, you know, there's no way that we're going to be either obligated or probably potentially able to pay what this bill could be. I mean, if you use, if you use the first four months of 2013...
It'd be another $50,000.
Yeah.
So, I guess we did allocate, I thought, somewhere between $50,000 and $70,000 just for Green County Regional Planning, so that money's...
That's not what Melissa gave me to understand. I can check with her and ask her...
I thought we...
That was.
I thought that we had, that was, I mean, that's the number she took out.
That's the number that's in, that she's taken out.
Okay.
I mean, that's, my question, from our standpoint, you know, I do believe we had those funds allocated specifically, and we knew that it was, you know, going to be between, I thought, between $50,000 and $70,000. That was our expectation.
Per year?
Per year.
Annually.
Yeah.
So, we, so, I mean, that, I would like to know, you know, this is, this is, this is pretty serious stuff. I mean, have we, have we gotten confirmation from Chris that we are within our rights?
Yes.
I feel an obligation to inform the county commissioners. So, we're going to have to do that. I may do that, we'll have to figure out how to do that. I mean, I may, I may talk to one personally. I don't know if they're, you know, what they'll do on an official basis. Sharon will probably let them know because I know she goes to their meetings, so.
Well, not her job.
No, I hope she doesn't. No, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, I can check with Melissa. She gave me to believe there would be $20,000 left in that line for this purpose, but if you're saying that there was another, that there was 50 to 70 supposedly put aside, I can ask her to recheck.
I mean, I remember when we made the decision, this was with Lori, and when we made the decision, we basically were saying that this position, this contract would be about the equivalent of a salary, of a planner's salary. So, it was kind of a wash between whether we had a salary, a staff person, or, and because we weren't ready to hire a staff person, we would go this route. So, I definitely expected there to be more money than that in the budget.
Well, it's my understanding, there was more money in the line, but that it was taken for other professional services. So, maybe it's in a line that she and I weren't looking at, or something.
If she could come and explain that, if it needs to be explained, that would be helpful.
Okay. And that is the last thing that I have.
Okay.
How are we doing on the RFQ for legal services?
That is, well, no one's returned yet, but they don't usually return them until the last minute.
Okay, because it's due this Friday?
And I believe it's Friday, yeah, that it's due. Yeah, usually, they come running in the door with those things at 10 minutes to the deadline time, so.
Okay.
I mean, it's not at all unusual.
Okay, so, thank you. Judy?
Just, Deb and I are doing a lot of catch-up on file drawers, which are like your soft drawer, and you need cleaning out all the time, even when you think they don't. And that thing should get in higher pretty rapidly. We have charter review, levy renewal coming up, a lot of things going on regarding charter review. The ad is running, we're actively seeking qualified residents, and the work, I would say, will last about six, six months or so. And I, you know, the nature of how long those meetings would go and how frequently will vary, and probably become a little more frequent towards the end of the process, but I encourage citizens who think they've got some good qualifications to bring to the table to please send me an email or a letter.
Thank you, Judy. Standing reports, we'll start with Lori.
Neither of mine met.
Jared?
Let's see, Brian, were you not able to sit in the library?
I was not.
Patty, did you go?
I did not.
Okay.
I was out of pocket for the library mediation. They sent me a small report to basically talk about how many mediations that they'd had, but nothing substantial.
Okay. Brian?
Oh, and I haven't, and I don't know what community resources are.
Yeah, I think, I don't think they've had any formal meetings.
Yeah, they didn't notify them any meetings with them, so.
Brian?
Okay, so, Human Relations Commission, you know, as we mentioned, pretty busy. At our last meeting, Janet Mueller came to talk about, from the Dayton mediation, some of the things that they're doing with citizens and officers. That was very educational. And we have planned a retreat, well, planning meeting for our retreat on November 1st. One of the things, you know, and sort of looking carefully at all the different ordinances, specifically, the HRC ordinance talks about having an annual retreat, so we're trying to do that. We hired our Miller Fellow. Her first name is Rita, but she goes by Kaba, and she is going to come in to meet Patty on Thursday, get on the payroll and everything on Friday, and she's really excited to start. And she's primarily dedicated to the yellow springs help.org, the online resource guide, which is also part of the HRC's mandate under the ordinance, that we should be keeping a local resource guide of everything that the community might need. And a big initiative that Deborah Williamson is planning is for the Day of Disabilities. This is a collaboration with Antioch University Midwest. Last year, we had a panel and some, a movie at the Little Art Theater. She's expanding that this year, and it's a great program, lots of different workshops, bringing lots of attention to those issues. So, the HRC is, you know, just staying really busy, and it's hard to keep up. Community Access Panel, we are close, I think, to hiring our Miller Fellow. We had, and Paul was there interviewing a lot of great folks. One of the things he really emphasized, because I was there for part of the interviews, was the liaison role with Antioch College and really bringing them in. And one of the things that I think was really a good idea is, we wrote into, they're going to do a full-time quarter with us, and that will involve their, you know, 40 hours a week, working with all the other Miller Fellows to video their learning experiences, and then we will be able to broadcast that on Community Access Panel. I think that's going to be great. We also looked carefully at Community Access Panel's mission, which is to constantly assess what the community wants out of community access. And so, next month, we're going to launch a survey. We're going to ask the Y S News to help us out there. We're going to have it do Survey Monkey, that whole thing, and we're going to approve that at our upcoming meeting and then put that out. And I think we'll get a lot of great feedback. And I already mentioned that we're going to get to keep our franchise fees. I'll learn about that on Wednesday. They are now called video service provider fees instead of franchise fees. And so, the Department of Commerce will let us know what we need to pass in terms of a resolution. And I do want to just update, Community Access is continuing to look at the municipal broadband issue. Right now, we're trying to delve into the wireless mesh idea, which is providing wireless service for the downtown, and looking at who the partners might be in that, and once we get some good ideas, there'll be a recommendation that council can look at and just kind of see where that's going. Public Arts Commission, for once actually, wasn't super busy. So, we actually did not have a meeting last month. We are closing in on the skate park, and we finally talked to a great firm who can give us engineered plans and actually match what would fit our community, what the skaters want, what we've been talking about in collaboration with the citizens. And I think we're really starting to think that prefab solutions just may not be successful for a variety of reasons, based on research we've done, experiences of other communities. So, some kind of combination is hopefully what we're going to get, and I think we'll have a meeting soon with them. And the other thing the Public Art Commission came up with, this was John Hudson's idea, is a Keeping Yellow Springs Beautiful Award that would be given several times a year to recognize residents, businesses, anyone in the community that's doing something really great to make our community as, you know, the creative community that it is. And I think that's a neat thing to do, and we'll have some recommendations about what that'll look like that will come back to council as well.
Thank you. Mary Ann?
The Energy Board met, and the discussion from the last meeting centered on the concept of community, a community solar project. And by community, it means residents and small businesses who might come together, who may not be able to put solar on their roofs, but would still like to have the benefit of solar, or have an investment in solar. And so, there's going to be a further presentation at the next Energy Board meeting that Patty comes to. Also, Brett Henderson resigned from the Energy Board, just so that there wasn't this issue of conflict of interest, since he works for a solar company. And the Energy Board needs to get some more information, I think, about, you know, we have this agreement of how much percentage small business and residents can have in terms of energy. I think it's 1%, and Antioch has pretty much taken up, I think, the 4%. So, we talked about getting more information. Well, about all of the contracts that we have with, for various electrical sources, that was the main point of discussion. And so, there would be room for one or more actual members on the Energy Board, which we didn't talk about that, but I noticed, I think that's one board where it can have, I don't know, five to eight members or something like that.
Yeah, that's the only one that has a range.
Yeah. So, that's the Energy Board. Environmental Commission, Lori and I have interviewed five candidates, and so, next, at the next meeting, I'll come back with a recommendation for approving four, which is the number of candidate, number of members on the Environmental Commission. Because the wellhead protection plan is probably one of the first things that the Environmental Commission will do, I actually read it today. And so, I have the, all the background data that was collected in the 90s and put together in 1998, plus the wellhead protection plan that was submitted in 2001. I can't, I didn't find the, some appendices. I'll see if I can find them and talk to Judy about that. But at any rate, I'm going to meet with Sarah Hippen Steele tomorrow, who was on one of those task forces that worked on the wellhead, that put the plan together, and works for the Miami Conservancy District, to go over, to look at what information we have in that plan, so I can start getting a sense of, yes, this is good information, we're going to have to get new information on this. So, I just, I'm trying to get more up to speed on where we are with that plan. So, that's the Environmental Commission.
When, when we were talking about, Linda Aller came from Bennetton Williams, she was responsible for writing most of that, wellhead protect, excuse me, wellhead protection plan. And when she came to a meeting a couple of years ago, when we were talking about the water plant, she said that the plan is still good, that there are probably a few areas that need to be updated. So, you may want to talk to Sarah about that and get some kind of budget information if we need to put a little bit of money in the budget to hire Linda Aller. I mean, it probably won't be much money, but, you know, we would probably want her to kind of be the final person to make sure that...
What's her last name?
Aller. It's, I think it's E R, A L L E R. Judy probably has her contact information.
And what she, who, what company?
Bennetton Williams, that wrote the wellhead protection plan.
Yeah, she came and spoke to us. When was it, when we were starting the water process?
Yeah, it was probably two years ago, I think, yeah. I mean, and she was very, she had very good information. She said it was actually very, still very timely.
As I read the plan, and, well, there's a lot of work that could be done.
Right. And you might also want to work with Joe, get Joe in the, in the loop too, Joe Bates?
That's a good idea, yeah. One of the candidates for the Environmental Commission is, well, she has a PhD in engineering and environmental studies, but she's a hydrologist as well. So...
Good enough qualification.
So, I'm very hopeful that, not only that she can take a major role in this, but that, I think that there's a lot of room for college students, when we're talking about, a lot of it's about education and how to get the education out, as well as maybe high school students.
I mean, that would be great stuff for project-based learning, and also for co-op for the college. I mean, it's, it's, I think there are some really amazing, water is one of their big things, and, you know, YSI, you know, they, there, corporately, they may be able to offer some...
Yeah, I'm talking to someone from YSI at the end of this week, too, so.
Great.
So, yeah, I'm very excited about that Environmental Commission.
Our next Miller Fellow for Environmental Commission.
Uta?
Yes, thank you. In listening, I just had two things to say. One of them that came up at the HRC meeting was the broadband and how it possibly, this is before the time we vote on CBE, which the election's coming up, but one of the points that was made was, that's an attraction if we were to have that possibility for businesses to want to be here. So, that was a point that I know we felt that was important, right, that she made, was it Dawn?
Dawn Johnson, yeah.
And this is just something completely different, but I know that a lot of cities and a lot of places are, when they build, and I don't know if it's only private or corporate, but they give a percentage to the arts, and we're, we're sort of invested in arts and drawing people here for that. Have we ever considered that?
We did.
Have you?
We did briefly, and...
1% for the arts, I think Arts Council actually asked for that, and...
How did that go?
I think we, at this point, I think we decided we were going to support it, support the arts in other ways, with physical space and with the commission and advisory role, and offering space, and offering staff to help do installations and things like that.
Yeah.
Thanks, Uta.
It's still not, it's not a bad idea still, I think.
Yeah, I mean, it is something that the Public Art Commission could do some more research on.
Chamber of Commerce, street fair was very successful, so I, no, no major, no major issues. Let's see, the next one is June 13th, so calendars.
Can I, can I ask, I know there was this issue about the possible demonstration.
There were, there were a couple of guys there, one guy with, with a gun, and another basically filming him. The one filming, and I guess only one of them was really kind of interacting. I wouldn't call it a demonstration, there were a few citizens there. It was, it was pretty, it was peaceful, it was, you know, I didn't think it was particularly confrontational. I know Chrissy was there, I don't know if she has another...
I was just sitting there quietly with my peace flag. He came over and wanted to be confrontational, but it was just one, one guy.
Yeah.
It wasn't really what I considered. And you haven't got my flag out a long time, so that was okay, but really, it wasn't what I would call a demonstration.
Yeah, no.
I was showing off, really.
Yeah.
Look at me.
And then, we, last Thursday, we had a very nice and successful business after hours at the Wellness Center. People are just, it's hard for me to believe that there are still people who haven't been there, but there, you know, there are, it's incredible. I was there at 6:45 this morning.
Good for you.
So, that was, that's my...
Accomplishment.
Yeah, for the day. MVRPC, Patty and I went to that meeting. It was probably the shortest MVRPC meeting I have ever been...
It was really short.
And I honestly... And I honestly...
Sarah Hippen Steele.
Yeah, Sarah Hippen, Sarah spoke about, I mean, there are issues going on. City of Dayton is actually looking at redoing their wellhead protection plan there. They're, they're looking at expanding the boundaries of their wellhead protection plan because they've got businesses saying it's too restrictive. Citizens are really pushing back strongly on that, so that's a real issue, and, so...
They moved their offices.
Oh, yes, MVRPC did move their offices. They're now like in the next building on the block. They're across the street in, in...
In the block, yeah.
Yeah, so, anyway. But not much happening on a regional planning basis, so. Future agenda items, did we add anything? I guess we did, we added...
Environmental Commission ordinance, got resolution accepting a bid on the library roof.
Yeah.
Do you want a resolution regarding video service provider fees? Are you going to be ready for that?
I would anticipate it, because I think they have a kind of a template, so it would be good to, because my understanding is, we were supposed to have gotten the letter two months ago, and we were supposed to have already done this, so, yeah, so, you know, so, yeah, let's plan on it, probably.
What about payment to the Planning Commission?
I'm guessing that that will be on our...
Oh, yeah, that'll, that'll be on there somewhere, probably under Old Business, I would think.
And, well, did we say we would further discuss the excise tax or the lodging tax?
Yeah, everyone is supposed to look through it and email me your suggestions or thoughts on changes. I'll put it all together in one document, and it'll be in your next packet for consideration.
Are there any, since it's a tax, a new tax we haven't had before, are there rules about when it can be instituted, or how many days after it goes into effect?
It's thirty, thirty days after.
Oh, so it's just the same as anything else?
It's an ordinance, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And you were going to contact the two...
Yes.
People involved that will be impacted. So I think that's it, is that entertain a motion for adjournment?
Second?
All those in favor, so you can move by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you. Nice to see people here. All the way to the end, the bitter end.